Okay, should be able to turn on now. We've got after seven, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we're still trying to get a few extra chairs in, so for those of you waiting, it's been quite a while since we've had standing room only here, but patient, thank you. We do need to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and will the clerk please call, roll?
Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Wonderful. And with all of our scheduled meetings, we will open with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now please rise and join in the saying of the pledge allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and the course of its standings, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not aware of any additional agenda items. Not hearing any. The first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. I would like to make just a very brief comment, and probably make an assumption here, a lot of people want to speak on a topic with the sewer rates, and we are going to give council members a chance to speak on that. They'll be on the agenda for that, so even though you don't see it on here, we will make sure that's on the agenda and make sure the council has the opportunity to respond appropriately. With that being said, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda which consists of the minutes of the May 17 council meeting. So moved.
Second.
First and second, are there any comments or suggestions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is appropriations ordinance 16-11. It's in the amount of $380,653.88. Do want to point out that 140,000 of this went for the courtyards, the Delta Creek, paving and sewer, and so the remaining 240 is kind of like our other related expenses that we have. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 16-11.
Second.
Now, but first and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're gonna move right along into city requested appearances. Marla Canfield is here from the Regional Economic Area Partnership, otherwise known as REEP. Belair's a member of REEP, and I know several council members up here sit on various committees, and so Marla's here to give us an update.
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually-
You do not look like Marla!
I'm gonna kick it off. I am Keith Loyn.
Okay!
I'm the senior administrator for REEP, and we are gonna hear from Marla in a minute, but I just wanted to join her for the presentation. Thank you for having us out here. And as you mentioned, REEP is a council of governments, been operating in South Central Kansas since 1997. In fact, one of the original banditos who started REEP is here with us tonight, Mayor Gary O'Neal, former Mayor Gary O'Neal. And it was a coalition of cities and really trying to work together on issues of common concern in the region, issues related to state and federal investments to help grow the economy, focusing on economic development strategies, advocacy issues with the state of Kansas for investments such as transportation projects, those types of things that drive the economy. REEP also was very much instrumental and continues to be so in the issue of affordable airfares from now Eisenhower Airport. REEP was a catalyst in getting the conversation started with the city of Wichita, Sedgwick County, and the state on strategies to help lower airfares to this region, which has proven to be a very successful strategy. And with the new Eisenhower Airport, we still recognize the need to have affordable commercial air service for businesses to grow here in South Central Kansas, so we can lead to job creation and certainly help communities grow. So, we're very pleased to be partners with Belair and this council of governments. You all have hosted numerous meetings out here, you have a great facility, we certainly appreciate that, and as Mayor Austin mentioned, I know a number of you, very familiar faces, serve on our various committees. So, with that, I'm gonna have Marla come up here and do just a little more detail about some current things that REEP is going on, but thank you very much for the time to be here.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Marla Canfield, I'm the administrative officer for REEP. Included in your packet is information about our 2016 legislative priorities, our 2016 work plan, information about the blueprint print for regional economic growth, which we call BREG, and the WSU leadership information, which as REEP members you do get a discount on those. Some of our membership benefits include a partnership with Hugo Wall Schools at Wichita State University. They provide a water, wastewater and stormwater rate survey for us, a salary survey summary, and community service fee summary for us. Currently, right now, they're in development of those surveys, and I do expect them within the next couple weeks. The cities were asked to get those by the end of May, so they're getting that data together, and so we'll have those out to all the city administrators, city managers as soon as it gets out. They also offer the Bilt Game, which is a community planning tool, and we offer that two times a year. They offer a grant writing seminar, a joint co-op training, which is in partnership with the city of Wichita that allows member communities to purchase goods and supplies off contracts that the city of Wichita negotiates. Sometimes with their buying power, they can negotiate a better price for those bigots ticket, like copy machines, police cars. Our member communities can buy off their contracts, so we have that agreement with them. We also cosponsor with WSU a 2016 Water Conference, which is coming up actually on June 23 at Exploration Place, and REEP members do receive a discount for that conference. And then we also have coming up in July, I believe it's July 14, a storytelling workshop. And then as for our community leaders, it's a tool so they can learn how to tell their community story when they're out talking to the public. And then we offer with, in partnership with WSU, the Efficient Gov Grant Finder information, and we send out bi-weekly emails of grant opportunities for communities that they can apply for. So far in 2016, REEP has hosted two meetings with the South Central delegation, one here in Wichita at WSU, and the other one was hosted in March 2 up in Topeka. We discussed with them our concerns around the tax lid, some of our current initiatives we're working on, and both of those events were very well attended. We also participate in all the Blueprint for Regional Economic Growth Cluster Strategies. There are eight cluster strategies identified for this region. Each one is led by business and industry, and our goal is to attend all those on behalf of our REEP members and be at the table representing REEP. We also participate in the direct, foreign direct investment plan, which is the FDI, and Councilmember McDonald attended that. It is the next step in the area having a export plan, sorry. And this is the next step, it's a planning process that's happening, and that is actually currently continuing, and Keith attends those for REEP. We also adopted a tax resolution repealing the tax lid, and we currently are focusing on transportation. We recently hosted, in conjunction with WAMPO, a transportation planning meeting, and in the future, REEP is going to start taking a lead on transportation planning for this area. There's been some missed opportunities, just because it sometimes appears we don't have a united front, and we're going to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. So, we're gonna start taking the lead. We have had one meeting, we've developed some action plans and action steps that will be presented to the REEP Executive Committee on Thursday, and then we'll move forward after that. And then, as Keith mentioned, we are currently supporting Ike Airport specifically, the changes to Southwest Airlines. We have rolled out a social media campaign for that, really supporting, educating the public on what Southwest and their rates can do, and having a low cost airline, what that does for our community. Our next Board of Directors meeting will be July 21 at Wichita State University. It will include a tour and an update from President Bardot about the innovation campus, so we're really excited about that. And even if you're not currently attending REEP committee meetings, you're always welcome to attend one, because Belair is a member, and so even if you're not technically assigned to one, if there's a topic of interest, feel free to come and join us anytime for our REEP meetings. We also want to thank you for your strong support. We have been very excited about having Dr. Becker and Guy and Diane Nguyen and Betty attend our meetings and participate. It's been very great to have you guys and have your input, and if there are topics you want REEP to talk about, bring those to the table. You know, we are here to work for you, so, and if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Canfield? I'd just like to say thank you so much for coming, and for the packets, would encourage all the council, I've seen a lot of us up here kind of flipping through, and we've gotten updates from different council members at different times, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would have a, would you be able to expand a little bit on the Southwest Airlines and what you're doing with them, and why you're promoting, just to expand a little bit, because some people may not know just what contribution Southwest has made to this greater community.
Absolutely. Southwest is rolling out a grassroots effort, the airport is really rolling it out, a grassroots effort to support Southwest Airlines. They came into our community, they received a subsidy, that subsidy is gone, and they are now looking to, they changed their routes to support businesses and to give better routes to the community. REEP got involved because they are trying to do that at the grassroots level, and so we are rolling that out for them. They have a wonderful PowerPoint on where their fares can take people, they've really opened the market to Phoenix and St. Louis. So, they have this great PowerPoint that we have, can put on our website so that people can view it, to show where you can go from those stations. The other key thing is by having the low-cost carrier, it keeps prices down for us. They have to stay competitive, the other airlines have to stay competitive, and if we would lose Southwest, it would really increase our, potentially increase our airfares from Wichita, which ultimately could hurt our businesses who are traveling in and out of Wichita, and so it's really important we keep them, advertising them. We have, they're doing a Twitter media campaign, Facebook, we're rolling all that out on our REEP pages, and we, they created a media campaign so that even cities can roll that out. It's pretty user-friendly, so right now, that's where we're at with Southwest and some of the work we're doing with the airport. So, and Keith attends the chambers meetings around the airport in general. We would feature any airline if, when route changes happen, we'll do the same as we're doing for Southwest, so, did that-
That's great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you for all the emails I get.
No.
You don't hear that the whole-
I'll remember that!
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right, so we still have a few people standing in the back in the hallway, looks like we might have a couple of seats up front, if somebody, some folks want to come in. At this point in the meeting, we opened up the meeting to citizens' concerns, looking out, seeing a full room here, looks like maybe what, 50 some people, standing room only, maybe a little unorthodoxed here. I guess first I want to let, let everyone know, especially, you know, those at, at home, I think it was, I'm the one who made the statement the last meeting, that we would hopefully have something to vote on, to make restitution for the overcharges of the sewer rates by this meeting. Fortunately, we won't have anything to vote on tonight, and we're still waiting for some final documents that are coming in, but hopefully council will have that in the next 30 to 60 days that we'll be able to, to discuss and vote on here. But, I guess with so many people there, here, let me ask, are there, how many people here want to speak on an agenda item? One of the zoning changes, or the agreement ordinances, anything that's on the agenda? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on that? Then with that, I have several cards that if you filled out, I will call you up. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council that did not get the chance to fill out one of these cards? If so, please raise your hand or come to the podium at the end of, we'll just go through the cards. With that, okay, we, do you have one? Okay, so we'll make sure we get to that. Anyone else if you want to, this is where we open it up to citizens, so again, we have a full house here. Let's go ahead and start. The first card I have is from James E. Dunning. Mr. Dunning, if you would come to the podium.
James E. Dunning, 4009 North Terrace Circle, Wichita, Kansas, the suburb of Belair to the south. I served as city administrator for the city of Belair from 1987 to 1998. At the last Belair City Council meeting, Gary O'Neal stated I was the supervisor who authorized the overbilling for sewer charges for some selected sewer users. I'm here tonight to say on the record that I had no authority to approve any rate increases or decreases for city services, sewer, water, or other, and I did not approve nor authorize any increases for any of these charges. I was not aware these increased charges were made, only the city council could authorize this. I understand the timeframe for this excessive charges were found to be during 2003 to 2007. This was long after I was gone, so I don't know why in the world those two felt it necessary to slander me. Again, I'm here only to state for the record that I did not authorize Ms. Martin to change sewer rates for any customers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Harold Smith. If you wish to address, you can approach the podium, and I think everybody here, up here knows who you are, if you'd state your name and address and-
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, citizens of Belair. I'm pleased that I have this opportunity to speak to all of you in a public forum. This is a good tradition you got, the citizens' concern business. I'm Harold Smith, I'm one of the ex-mayors in the city, and I live at 5317 East 39th Street North. This is down in the southwest corner of the city. I'm here to present some additional facts on the issue of overcharging on sewer, water and sewer rates. I'm also here to support Mr. Dunning, who has been charged with telling the water clerk to make the increases in the, in the, in the water sewer rates. In June, in the June 2016 Belair Breeze, it was reported that these increased rates resulted in an overcharge in the water sewer rates for the years 2003 and 2007, 2, 2007, 2003 to 2007. And I presented the council and the staff with a list of the mayors for the, in the city from the year 1981 to 2010, and the dates of each one of those mayor's service to the city. This was put together by the city clerk and provided by, city clerk, city staff, and provided by the city staff in 2010 in connection with the 30-year anniversary that we were celebrating that year. Gary O'Neal, another former mayor, has said that Mr. Dunning, a former city administrator, told the water clerk to make these increases in rates. O'Neal says he got his information from the water clerk. It feels to me like this is an attempt to find somebody to blame for these overcharges. I believe the, I believe the council hasn't heard all the information about this yet, it sounded like you're still working on it, which is good, because there's still, I think, a lot to be found out and discovered and recognized about this issue. But one, the main big fact I want to make is one to repeat what Mr. Dunning's already said, that Dunning and I left the service, left the city government in 1998. According to the Belair Breeze, these overcharges didn't start until 2003, that's five years after Dunning and I had nothing to do with the city. So it's clear to me that he was, Dunning was not involved in any way with these overcharges. Also, I'd like to state that I have worked with Mr. Dunning in city government for 20 years. I've found him to be both very competent and also very truthful. You heard, tonight you heard him deny any involvement in this increase in the city water and sewer rates. In fact, the city administrator, which is what he was at that time, the city administrator has no authority to increase these rates. If he suggested an increase, it would be up, it would have to be approved by the city council before it would become effective. This issue disturbs me for several, couple reasons. One, I'm concerned about the possible damage, damage to Mr. Dunning's reputation based on false information. And second, this whole discussion that's been going on could have a negative impact on land sales and on people and businesses wanting to move to Belair. When we, when you've got a major project to sell land and get people to move into city, buy houses, so we can increase taxes and pay off all our debt. Sorry, I forgot where I was going with that big point. And you will too, when you get the V84.
Okay, and next, and looking on my sheet, and I knew this, is where, I'm just going, whatever, another former mayor, Lyle Ackerman, who-
I didn't realize I was so early on the agenda. I'm Lyle Ackerman, as you pointed out, I live at 4920 North Hillcrest. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and citizens of Belair. I do not know the facts regarding the sewer charge overbill for commercial users in Belair over a several-year period, only what I have heard. I do know it is a fact that when I made the case to move from a part-time city administrator to a full-time city administrator, the Dunning family and Mayor Smith supported a recall effort to remove me and two other council members for supporting a move to hire a full-time administrator, which they did not want to do, even though many instances of important matters were not being attended to by the part-time administrator. He just did not have the time, only working two half-days a week. So I can understand the pressure Mrs. Martin must have been under if asked to overbill commercial users by Mr. Dunning. I and other council members felt the retaliation of the mayor and the city administrator for standing up to an effort to move to a full-time professional administration for our growing city. The recall effort failed, but if the time and effort spent by both sides of the issue would have been instead directed to streets, water, sewer, police, and parks, the city would have been much better off today. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, next, as far as I know, not a former mayor, Kelly Brewster.
My name is Kelly Brewster, I live at 5504 East 49th Street North, and I'm here as a concerned citizen and representing the citizens of Belair. So far, I've just been listening, watching, and learning, but it's gone beyond what it should have gone, and I'm here to present to the council a petition from the citizens of the city of Belair, a petition requesting the resignation of Betty Martin as councilwoman. Thank you.
Next, Dennis McCallum?
Pass.
McCallum? Beg your pardon?
Pass.
Pass? Right back with tradition, we'll call up another former mayor, Gary O'Neal.
I'm Gary O'Neal, I live at 4967 North Hillcrest here in Belair. I'd like to clarify a couple comments you've made earlier, alluded to me, I was told by Ms. Martin that she was told that her supervisor, or Mr. Dunning was the one who told her to make the corrections for proper billing on the commercial accounts. So based on Ms. Martin telling me that, that it was Mr. Dunning, Mr. Dunning left here and resigned in 1998, along with Mayor Harold Smith resigned in 1998, and then Lyle Ackerman took over as president of the council to then run the city. I'm going to correct that, and the reason the records only go back to 2003 to 2007 is because the city have no records that go back any further than that. So if Mr. Dunning was the one that told Ms. Martin, which I believe and I support Ms. Martin, which I said previously, and I also said that we were, she's caught up in a city that was growing, we were going from a small city to a large city, we had- that was growing, we were going from a small city to a large city, we had accounting issues, where a lot of issues were going on. So it goes back further than 2003, 2007 regardless of what the Bel Air Breeze put in the paper. And that has been verified by city staff that that's as far back as they have records. So that's not something that I dreamed up or I made up. Okay. Now, I have in my hands here a financial audit from 2000 of Bel Air, and all the city had records go back that far. Financial statements, independent auditor's report for the year 2000, and our auditors at that time, which as I recall were new auditors, when I was mayor, we asked to come in and audit the city, were George, Byram, Noel, PAs. And in their, in their report, it says in here to the council about our accounting software that we had, and I'd made a note at the time back in 2000, how old is our accounting software? And I was told our accounting software at that time went back to the mid-'90s, maybe '95 or '96, so it was only five or six years old. It says that we noted numerous deficiencies in the current accounting software utilized by the city. And it goes on in detail to talk about some of those. It says, "These situations indicate that the accounting software is not totally reliable and financially indicate," excuse me, "not totally reliable and financial decisions based on the information provided by the system typically reviewed in summary form with control account totals could be deceptive." It also said, "We recommend the city prioritize the procurement of funding, fund accounting software which fully utilizes all sources of financial transactions with city processes." And it, then it highlights and goes into utility billing and collection. It says, "Currently, the city's utility billing and collection system is not integrated with the general ledger." And it goes through some examples, and it says, "Further, it does not provide an accurate matching of the revenues earned for a period against the related cost to provide service." Says, "As noticed, as noted previously, we recommend that city staff pursue utility billing and utility collection software that is compatible with this general ledger software." Based on that, when I was mayor, we, we bought new software, and I think two times before I left, three terms of mayor, we bought new software. So the city was in growing, we were going through growing pains, we went to full-time city administration, we're trying to make sure that everything is being done correctly. And it has been, as the mayor has said, that has been corrected. Everything is current, it is up to date, and it is being done correctly. And I will give, if the city does not have copies of this, I will give you copies of this auditor's report, as I have given you other copies of things the city no longer has because either they're thrown away by a previous mayor or the city no longer keeps them. In fact, I gave Mr. Ty how many boxes of files that you're going through now because the city has, don't have the record?
I think four or five.
Yeah, more like six or seven. Okay. Now, I'm running out of time here. I have a comment for the mayor. Mayor, when did you move to Bel Air?
About 12 years ago.
So not prior to, you weren't living here in 1997 or 1998?
Yeah, just to quick him out here, no.
No, you were not, okay. I'm reading from the Bel Air Breeze, the Mayor's Corner article that he wrote in this June edition of Bel Air Breeze. I'm going to read this one paragraph. The mayor says in his corner, says, "It doesn't make sense that an administrator with knowledge and authority to request an increase in sewer rates to the governing body would decide to overcharge just a few accounts to generate a relatively small amount of money in proportion to the total amount of money needed to operate the sewer utility. For that reason, I find it hard to accept statements blaming others." To me, that sounds like you do not believe anything Ms. Martine is telling you, you don't believe what she says unless I'm misreading what you put in the paper. And I don't think it's the mayor's position to be taking that position against governing body members up here and tell, "All the facts are in and the DA has done his, his investigation, depositions are done." And I would request to have a meeting with Mr. Lasher and the mayor next week if possible to discuss some other things, if that is possible.
Thank you for your time. Next, we will bring up Sharon Lindstedt.
Sharon Lindstedt, 5450 East 45th Street North. I've lived here 30 years plus. I just find it, as the mayors of all said, you know, they've reclusive from it, none of them are responsible. So somebody's got to be. And I've never heard you, Betty, ever say that you did anything wrong. And why the council would support that woman instead of the community is incredible. You know, to be charged in 28 extra meters, did that just come out of thin air or is that a plot? I don't know. Anyway, I just, I'm struggling with the fact that no one's taking blame, even under her own words, she said that she was doing it. And so far, no mayor has said that they were. Does that, does that say anything to anybody? Thank you.
Next is David Landall.
David Landall, 4743 Kruger, Bel Air. First, Mr. Mayor, you, I'm going back to where Gary, you were quoting the Breeze stating that you, that the audit gave you confidence in the current utility billing practices. I've got my hands here, three of my water bills, all from this year, and I didn't dig them all out, but I forgot them all. And let's see, in January to February, I was, I used 3,300 gallons of water, and if I read this bill right, I was billed for 4,400 gallons of sewer. April to May, I used 3,100 gallons, was billed for 3,100, 3,400 gallons. And February to March, I used 2,500 gallons of water and was billed for 4,400 gallons of sewer. Now, I did not go to my neighbors and borrow water to dump down the sewer. If that statement sounds familiar to somebody, it's because I said it right at this very podium about a couple of years ago in the council, same thing, and it has not been addressed. So, you know, I think I'd take another look at that, and nobody's done anything to fix it yet. And you're right, it doesn't make something like this, going back to the so-called overcharging incident, it doesn't make sense. You said you can't, you can't accept the blame game, whatever, you need to wake up and smell the coffee, inquire about the city's history a little bit, though I must admit, the city history is probably a bit abridged. I was one of the council members, they tried to recall over this deal, of trying to get some good city administration in here. First of all, I think the city council is a little bit premature in admitting overcharging customers for water. I don't have a problem with being open about it, but all of a sudden we're overcharged, overcharged, and there was, I don't think there was any overcharge. At the best of my recollection, the sewer charges back then were based on the number of meters a customer had, and if you had one meter and you used one gallon, you paid the same sewer charge as someone that had one meter and used 100,000 gallons. So all this overcharging was no more than a, all, I admit it was an error, and all they really did is try to adjust it so these people were paying their fair share of sewer charges. And it was the wrong way to do it, and if we'd had good city administration, we'd have prob, they'd probably paid the same amount by now that, that they did then. And should they get their money back? Well, that's not for me to decide, but I don't think a real overcharge took place. There was just a lack of, of poor supervision, I guess you might say. And coming to the last meeting, I heard about this sewer and water overcharges. I expected people to thank Ms. Martine for pointing this out and the errors, and after all, they, they were in line for a refund, so why wouldn't they want to thank her? But she just opened a can of worms there and defended her actions, which were reportedly ordered by her supervisor, and she did it to save her job. People don't seem to understand that. My belief is, had we had a good time administrator, an ordinance and formula would have been in place, everyone would have been billed their fair share, and most likely, these nine customers would have very, nearly paid the same amount. I asked one customer what they expected out of this thing, and they said, "Our money back." Who knows? But at least one entity and one council member wants Ms. Martine's head on a platter. And what would good, what good would her head on a platter do anyone? I think I smell a skunk in the woodpile here somewhere. If you succeed in getting her head on a platter, what are you going to do with it? Display it in your trophy case? Doesn't sound very Christian to me. And as a side note, the council member wanting her, help put her head on a platter is employed by that entity. Is that a conflict of interest? Should she have excused herself and stepped down from the bench while discussion was going on? League of Municipalities seems to think so. I would like to have someone explain also to me the relationship between a person trying to keep their job 20 years ago and her ability to hold an elective office today. These are two completely separate jobs. Perhaps in her heart, she's trying to do any small, small injustice that may have happened in the past, right the wrong, et cetera. If anyone is going to, going to demand Ms. Martine step down, do it for a reason of her council performance. Democratic election was held, Ms. Martine was elected, the Bel Air citizens decided they wanted to represent them here as a council member. Now a group wants to overrule the citizens of Bel Air and of our community in, in Bel Air, and I think, and, and take their representative from them. The Bel Air citizens and hope they're watching on TV, they ought to be outraged at this. Someone's trying to take away their vote. By the way, there was a period of time when at least some of these commercial interests were getting their water for $2,000,000, and the city was buying it in the third tier from Wichita for $3.50 per 100,000. So basically, we were subsidizing their water bill. I didn't see one person walk in here and thank the city for subsidizing their water bill back then. And why can't we just be honest about this? Someone has a goal or mission other than righting a wrong. What would be more, all, all anybody could want is their money back. This action taking place, it really should just outrage the citizens of Bel Air and make them very nervous. And I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Next, we'll call up Kristen Jones.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Jones, and I live at 4626 Farmstead Court. Thank you for allowing me to express my ongoing concerns related to this overcharging issue in Bel Air. I wasn't able to attend the meeting for May 17th, but I was able to review the video. In light of the actions taken by Ms. Martine, I feel it is appropriate to request Council Member Martine resign from the council effective immediately. During the last council meeting, former mayor O'Neill reported that he had talked with Ms. Martine about the sewer overcharging and, quote, "Speaking for Martine, Jim Dunning had told her to alter the bills," unquote. O'Neill also reported Dunning was her supervisor, again, according to what Ms. Martine had told her, told him rather. And so if this is all truthful regarding Dunning telling her to do it, not do it, did it on her own, tried to make it fair, the overcharging of these businesses clearly occurred far prior to 2003, far prior to that. When Ms. Martine was advised by council in 2006 that her actions were illegal and to cease, there was no attempt by Martine to make it correct at that time, which, I mean to cease, don't get me wrong, but there was no attempt to request other city officials investigate it further. There was no attempt to disclose it, the issue to the public. There was no attempt to notify customers of the overcharge and no attempt to reimburse them at this time, or at that time. Mr. O'Neill commented further that Ms. Martine is, quote, "The victim of comedy of errors by a growing city," unquote. I'd like to point out, Ms. Martine is not the only victim here. Victims include those businesses who were subjected to the illegal overcharging. The victims include the current mayor, all of the council, all of the staff, the citizens of Bel Air, as well as any future citizens of Bel Air in light of this issue. I've asked Mayor Austin and City Manager Lasher to estimate the expenses to date regarding the investigation of this issue. Mayor Austin indicated as of May 23rd, three city personnel spent time between April 12th through May 1st gathering information for their auditors at an estimated cost of $750. As of May 23rd, the city attorney has spent approximately 15 hours over three weeks on this issue at an estimated cost of $2,000. As of May 23rd, Alan Gibson-Hulick has charged the city $5,000 for the audit. As of May 23rd, those total expenses, I'm not a math geek, but I think that's $7,750. And we're not done yet. We're not done. If we include what the number from the audit indicates, which is $29,258, I think, plus the $7,750, we're looking at $37,000 plus. And again, we're not done yet. Dr. Bro was here at the last meeting and indicated he felt that the city, he'd actually requested that the city look back further to audit, and again, if the records are there or not there, regardless, he asked. During the last meeting, Councilwoman Becker commented during that meeting that the issue had happened long ago and residents, quote, "Don't have to worry," unquote, about current problems. And I believe that's the case, I hope, although there's the current bills we got. At any rate, Councilwoman Nguyen commented during the same meeting, discussion of this issue, that discussion of this issue was, quote, "Dredging up things better off left of the past," unquote. While I agree, the issue happened long ago, and it would be a whole lot easier not to dredge it up, these things that had happened in the past, and the current issue is uncomfortable, awkward, not fun to talk about, but regardless, it must be corrected. To date, the only public apology has come from Mayor Austin. I've not heard Councilmember Martine apologize publicly. I believe it's possible you're being advised by council to avoid any such apology, but the lack of admission of any wrongdoing regardless of motive is disturbing. And allow me to uncomfortably and awkwardly, but dress you directly. I've never met you personally. I have listened to Councilwoman Becker say that she's received numerous calls in support of what you've done for the city. I've listened to former mayor O'Neill say that you're a dedicated, loyal, and honest person. I am not and would not call into question the opinions of others. I'm, I'm not attempting to minimize the distress that this has likely caused you. I would encourage you, however, to consider your dedication to this community now and resign from the council to minimize any additional damage. It's time to allow the city to begin resolving this issue and working towards rebuilding trust in our city government. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
And I have three cards left, and then we had one from the audience, so just for those watching, I'm going to let you know. Next is Caleb Bowers.
Caleb Bowers, 5123 North Hampton. I've lived in Bel Air for all of my adult life. I've started a family here, I've started to raise my son here. I was proud to live in Bel Air. Over the last month, I've heard from physicians across the state who know me, multiple patients, nurses, staff at the various facilities that I work at, what's going on in Bel Air, what's wrong with Bel Air. They've seen the YouTube videos, they've seen the reports on the news, and I come up with answers for lots of things. Patients ask what, why they're sick, what's going on, I can usually provide that answer. When they ask me that question, what's wrong with Bel Air, I don't know the answer, I don't know why this was done. I know that the law was violated because the ordinance in place in 2002 was that this rate be charged for this amount to these rate be charged for this amount to these people, and that clearly was not done. We've heard nothing from the current council member that did that. That disturbs me that that person who did those things, whether it was out of ignorance because it was a growing city or whether it was intent, it's still very disturbing to trust that person with even greater power that they have now. Yes, that was a time, a long time ago. It was 10 years ago. But again, this person has not said anything about it. People have come to her defense and I respect that she has friends that are able to speak for her, but it disturbs me that this person thinks that they've done nothing wrong. It worries me that this person is again in more power and it worries me when people ask, hey, should I come live in Bel Air? Makes me want to say no. I mean, my aunt is moving here from Topeka in the next few months. I would love for her to live in one of these houses nearby so she can see my son. But I have to tell her, maybe you shouldn't because I don't know what's going on with Bel Air. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Rob Lindstedt, 5450 East 45th Street North. Growing concern, I know some of the words that were passed on by some, the best defenses just to wait it out. And I think that that may not be the best defense, at least for the city of Bel Air. Maybe for individual councilmen it might be, but not for the city of Bel Air. Here's why I say that. I think there's a rising concern. First of all, in the small sample of individual sewer bills that were monitored, 20% were wrong. You accept 20% as suitable? I don't think the citizens of Bel Air do. Next, years going back even further. So the city has no records at all before 2003? What is in the, under the water trail? What are those records? Because we have our records and it's interesting, as we begin to do that calculation, I believe that the citizens of Bel Air will soon call for full accounting during the entire tenure of Betty in her position to regulate not only rates but also sewer charges. To say that that's fair to add charges, it's unbelievable. Growing concern. You see, I do see a number of families each year, and for families as they come to Sunrise to interview, they talk about moving to this community. And my concern is, I've seen a lack of people wanting to move to this community. Why? Because we have made the news and it's not positive. In the past, it's been positive. It's not now. Why isn't it now? Dishonesty, fraud, embezzlement, hidden charges and agenda, that cannot invite people to move to our community. That cannot invite businesses to our community. And so why, as a council, do we continue to say, let's defend those actions? If we don't take some kind of action, if we don't say some type of comment, I believe that you will find yourself really thwarting the growth both of individual residents as well as businesses. We are concerned for that. We're concerned for our city because our city is not developing as it could or should because everyone knows that that was dishonesty, it was fraud, it was intentional. Thank you.
And the final card I have is for Jessica Scholes.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Scholes. I live at 4717 Elk Creek Drive here in Bel Air. What happens when you go last is everybody says what you're planning to say, so I'll be pretty brief. I have no need to reiterate what's already been said to all of you. What I do want to present to you is a viewpoint from a new member of this community because our family is brand new to Bel Air. And I have followed the situation with the water charges very closely, along with many of the other issues that you are faced with each and every week as a city council and as the mayor. And this is one that concerns me as a citizen because I own property here in Bel Air. And nine businesses were overcharged and I got that information directly from Betty Martine. It was during your video where you said what you said about creating more meters for those businesses in order to charge them more and then being told it was illegal. And then me following that timeline and following the timeline of watching the city council and the mayor address this issue. And I think that it's an issue that needs to be fully audited, as someone's already requested, I think, twice now. I think that it's an issue that needs to not be so emotionally driven on people taking sides. You are a city council and you are running a business. You're running my business because I'm paying you to be there. You're elected and then any amount of money that goes into this city comes out of my pocket and your pocket and all the people that are in this room and they're watching. And we want you to do the right thing. For the last several meetings, I've stared at this sign that you have, the city of the future with respect for its past. Well, we need a respectable past to be a city of the future. And you had a big problem and you're going to let the proper authorities decide if there was illegal activity, improper activity, if someone needs to be held accountable on those charges? This is not a court of law. We're not giving you depositions and we're not submitting evidence here and you're not going to go back there in the jury room and decide who's at fault here, but you are going to let the authorities do that and you need to be transparent about it. You need to let this community know what you're doing to fix it every step of the way, not when you come to this final answer sometime in the near future or the distant future. We need to know what's happening each and every week and we shouldn't have to pack the room for this one issue and have 17 people get up and tell you that it's still important to us six months from now if this is still not resolved. You still need to be accountable, even though it was a long time in the past. And I appreciate everything that's being done. I know that you have called for this full audit. I know that you have mentioned that there are authorities investigating. I think that there was two reasons that I chose the house that we picked in Bel Air. I had 45 minutes to pick my house. We flew in from DC. I picked it because this is a beautiful community. The houses were well-built, the people were very friendly, and I picked a school for my kids. I had 45 minutes to do that. And in that time, I met a community of people in Bel Air that had a school for my kids that was the right fit. And then I picked a house very near that and a beautiful community. And I appreciate everything that's going on on all nine businesses, the school that is directly affected and is mostly represented here speaking tonight, and in this community. Thank you.
And we did have one member at the beginning, one member of the audience who wishes to speak, like to come forward. If there's anyone else at this point that has not already spoken that would like to, just ask you to line up.
My name is Adam Cloyde. I live at 4922 North Hedrow Court. We've been a member of the community for about two years now. I've attended several of the council meetings, on the campaign trails, been at the debates. Based upon my experience with Martine, Ms. Martine, I think she's a very passionate advocate for the city of Bel Air. I think, even though I've disagreed with some of the stances that she's taken on some things, I think that she always does what she feels is best for the community within the two years that I've known her. Having said that, however, I think at this opportunity, I think your final act in service to the city would be to step aside and allow the controversy to die down. If you chose not to do that, and I certainly feel that it's well within your right to fight and stand up for what you believe in, I believe that the city council should censor her and count her vote or not count her vote moving forward until such time as the district attorney's office can determine if there was criminal activity at that time in the past. But I do not believe that she should be a voting member of the council until such time as that can be determined. I think the city, I think it's within your scope to censor her and allow her to still sit at her seat and allow her to still voice her opinion but not count her vote. Because I think there's enough people in the petition and enough people in the community that believe that she does not represent us anymore and we do not want her to speak for us. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public comment on this topic and we'll open it up to our governing body, our city council members. When I ask each council member, when I call on you, if you'd like to state your thoughts and opinions on this, and then, you know, when you call in, so we don't have a bunch of stepping back and forth, and then we'll move on to our regular agenda. But I want to thank everybody in the audience for being here tonight and everyone watching at home. I know, a little awkward here, last time we started this side, but I try to go back and forth, so I'm going to start with Mrs. Martine.
Is this mayor's report?
No, this is a-
Oh, I have no comment.
No comment. Mrs. Nguyen?
Well, I too hesitate to make too much comment because I know there are a number of things that I do not know that may have occurred since the last time I had communications with the administrators or other council members. I would just say to you that, believe that we are taking this very seriously, but there is a lot of miscommunication going on when we're going back to many, many years past. Just timeframes of what happened when. And, you know, I lived through most of those. In fact, I lived through all of those because I've lived here since before it was a city. But we are taking these seriously and it is not the first time that there have been serious issues in this community.
So Bob?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I know there's a lot of things you could be doing, so I want to say thank you. I appreciate all the comments. I had a couple of comments I did want to make. First of all, I do find it a little disturbing that we would have former administrator Jim Dunning come all the way here and yet people still think that he's, has some hidden agenda that he's lying. He would have no reason to do that. Mayor, former Mayor Gary O'Neill is saying that this happened way back in the 1990s and on. That concerns me because if that's indeed the truth, this could well cost the city over $50,000 to $100,000. And, you know, at this point, I'm with the others of you that are really concerned because we don't have that kind of money sitting around to pay back what we owe unless we end up having to charge every citizen in Bel Air an increase in their water and sewer rates. And I am very concerned. I appreciate Mrs. Jones telling us how much it has already cost us. If we're going to do an audit back, it's going to cost thousands more. That was just an audit, I believe, from 2003, was it, Mayor?
Correct.
On, for $5,000. I'm not asking for Betty's head on a platter. I never said such a thing. I believe Mr. Landau has now left, but I never asked for that. All I said was, what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. And overcharging businesses because you felt like you wanted to, according to your April 12th, where you said you did it until you were told to stop, nowhere did you say it was an accident. The other thing I do want to say, as a member of the council, I have been on here since 2005. I left, I won again in 2009, I was re-elected in 2013. I don't lose my right to speak as a council member because of where I'm unemployed. Now, if it came up and it was an issue that just dealt with Sunrise, I have always recused myself. This is nothing on a vote right now. We are just talking about nine different entities, nine. I happen to be employed by one of them. So I don't feel like I am out of line for speaking on this subject anymore than I think that any of you that perhaps have gone and have someone at Catholic Care Center or if you go to church, a resurrection, I would not want you to not to have a voice. And so I am going to tell you guys, and tell, the attorney tells me that I can't, I am going to voice my opinion on this issue. And I thank all of you who came. I still think it is a grave issue. I stand alone as the lone council member that thinks it is wrong to overcharge just because you feel like it. I don't care, I'm going to go on the record as saying, I still think that we need to find out what we owe, we need to figure out a plan, and I don't even know, Mayor, what that will be. But I do want to thank you guys for your concerns and I know that as an elected member that I am going to continue to fight for all of these nine businesses and any others that we find. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a rather lengthy report to make and I would ask that if there are objections while I speak, that they be written down and if the people who object to what I say would like to question me afterwards, I would be happy to give them the best answers that I can. I've got, there were three issues, now it's basically two. The first issue was the sewer meter charges. But an independent audit concluded that extra sewer meter charges were levied from 2003 to 2007. That issue is now in the process of resolution, so I won't stress anything about that. The second issue is who created the charges and why. Former council member Dr. Gary Bro stated that he spoke to Jim Dunning Sr. about the excess sewer charges. Mr. Dunning denied any responsibility, as he did here this evening. We now have two denials of responsibility for an act that took place basically 20 years ago and has been and lasted for approximately 10 years, was closed 10 years ago. And this act has been affirmed by an independent auditor. There's no doubt that the charges were levied. Mr. Dunning, the city administrator, either instructed Ms. Martine, a city clerk, to increase the sewer charges on Catholic Care and Sunrise Christian Academy, or he did not instruct her to do so. These contradictory statements cannot both be true. One statement has to be false. How can we here present make a determination of which statement is more likely to be true? We do that individually by becoming a judge who looks at all available evidence from the past 20 years in an objective and impartial manner. We do not judge character, and I repeat that, we do not judge character. We only determine which opposing statement is more likely to be true. James Dunning Sr. is a certified public accountant. The examination to become a certified public accountant is developed and graded by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. In total, the examination takes nearly 14 hours to complete. One does not just go to a college accounting class and pass it and then go out and take a CPA exam and expect to pass it. A person has to know the field in depth. Mr. Dunning worked at FB Kubik and Company CPAs. He is the former budget director for WSU, Wichita State University. He opened his own firm, Dunning and Associates, in 1980 and was the city administrator for Bel Air. I have a record that shows it was 1994 to 1997, but Mr. Dunning this evening said he began in the 1980s. I'll defer to Mr. Dunning's memory, but the record that I had was 94 to 97. Overall, Mr. Dunning appears to be a very experienced accountant and businessman. Betty Martine has lived in Bel Air for more than 36 years. She worked for the city for 28 years in various clerical positions. She has attended- She has attended several classes at WSU Wichita State and is a certified municipal clerk. Ms. Martine is not an accountant, but she is a founding mother of Bel-Air. She carried a petition for incorporation door-to-door in 1980, asking for signatures. Ms. Martine has volunteered on several Bel-Air city committees and was chairwoman of Bel-Air Days for twenty years. Overall, Ms. Martine appears to be a very experienced clerk and volunteer. In examining the work history and educational background of these two individuals, certain dissimilarities become evident. These disparities in background make it easier to make a determination of which statement is more likely to be true. Asking and answering some questions may be helpful. If Mr. Dunning denies responsibility for the excess sewer charge, and we believe his denial, then we must ask why an expert in departmental incomes and expenses did not notice a significant increase in sewer expenses for Catholic Care and Sunrise Christian Academy. An answer given to me is, "It was hidden." And that person said, "And it wasn't just hidden, it was hidden, it was expertly hidden by Ms. Martine." I have an aside now, but I'll get back to my questions. The accountants at Catholic Care and Sunrise Christian Academy should also answer why they did not notice a sudden and significant increase in their sewer rate or overall water bill. A substantial jump in the cost of water and sewer is not hidden. It is obvious, that ends my aside. Then we go to two further questions. How and where does a city clerk acquire the knowledge to deceive a certified public accountant and city administrator? That's question one. Second question is, why should a city clerk study to gain this knowledge and use it to increase sewer rates? The first answer is that clerks in general do not deceive their supervisors because when the deception is discovered, that clerk will be fired. The second answer is, clerks in general do not care about how much money they receive from customers, nor do they care about how much money they bill their customers. They care about doing their job correctly. To assume they care about increasing sewer rates is preposterous. There are several more questions that can be asked. I won't go into that because these questions and the reasonable answers to them are sufficient enough to allow me to determine that Ms. Martine's statements are more likely to be true than are Mr. Dunning's statements of denial. The third and final issue I have is the denunciation of Councilwoman Betty Martine. This issue's source is the video of the April 12th, 2016 Bel-Air City Workshop. Betty Martine stated clearly and directly that she charged Catholic Care and Sunrise Christian Academy higher sewer rates by adding sewer meters to their accounts. Leaders at Sunrise Christian Academy became aware of these remarks and calculated how much they were overcharged. As an experienced businessman, I know exactly how to proceed when I discover that I have been overcharged. I go to the representatives of the overcharging party. If they do not resolve my complaint, then I schedule a meeting with the person who runs the business. If that meeting proves to be unsatisfactory, then I contact an attorney to seek advice. Rarely does such an issue come to this. Most often, the overcharge is resolved after my first complaint. Sunrise leaders did not come to the city to ask for a redress. They chose another course of action. They chose to attack the apparent agent of the overcharge, Ms. Martine, and they chose to attack her via the media, audio, visual, and print. Many listeners, viewers, and readers are attracted to negative stories and, in my opinion, derived from years of observation. That is why the media, in large part, focuses on negative stories. Sunrise leaders have publicly called for Ms. Martine's resignation and have stated their desire for a recall from office if she does not resign, and a petition was handed out this evening.
I'd like to object, if I can comment later.
We're gonna close public comments.
Some others have aligned themselves with the Sunrise leaders' viewpoint. I was the presiding officer at the April 12th workshop. The mayor did not arrive until after Betty's comments about the sewer charges. If one watches the video of the workshop, one will not see Betty Martine with her head down, wringing her hands, speaking in a weak voice, and confessing to an illegal and criminal act. To the contrary, she speaks in a strong voice with head up and states the facts clearly. To paraphrase Dr. Bro, "A person who knows and believes she is guilty of an illegal criminal act does not go to a public and televised forum to proclaim her guilt." Most guilty people attempt to hide their guilt. Some of Betty's accusers have made conflicting statements. At the April 12th workshop, each member of council supported her observation that Sunrise and Catholic Care discharge more sewage than others and should pay a higher price. Councilwoman O'Donnell supported Ms. Martine's actions by saying twice, "They should be paying more. They should be paying more." Then at the May 17th council meeting, Councilwoman O'Donnell said, quote, "I seem to be the only one beside the mayor up here that thinks this is a very big deal," end quote. Another quote, "To overcharge someone because you thought you could is illegal. I cannot believe that we think it's okay," end quote. I find the April 12th statements and the May 17th statements to be contradictory. Sometime after the May 3rd council meeting, I'm going to paraphrase what the mayor said in my presence to Betty Martine. "Betty, I want to assure you that I will use the mayor's office to defend you, and if necessary, we will use all the resources this city has to defend you." I believe that statement is refuted by the written remarks printed in the mayor's column in the June 2016 Bel-Air Breeze newspaper. That statement, that paragraph has been read before, but I will read it again just for emphasis. Quote, "It does not, it doesn't make sense that an administrator with the knowledge and authority to request an increase of sewer rates through the governing body would decide to overcharge just a few accounts to generate a relatively small amount of money in proportion to the total of money needed to operate the sewer utility. For that reason, I find it hard to accept blaming others," end quote. That written paragraph is tantamount to calling Councilwoman Martine a liar. That statement implies that no city administrator would want to charge a business more money for excessive use of the city's utility. It also suggests that Ms. Martine is solely responsible for the overcharges. These contradictory statements about Betty Martine, along with the various accusations leveled against her, are made not because some people seek justice through a peaceful resolution of the problem, but rather by those who seek to defame an honest person's character. To seek to sully an honest person's reputation is reprehensible. To be more graphic, I suggest that those who want Betty Martine to be disgraced and removed from office are attempting to brand a scarlet letter on Betty's forehead. That letter is a capital L for liar. In closing, I ask all who are listening to heed and act according to the following words. A new commandment I give unto you, that you love one another, as I have loved you, that you also love one another. By this shall all men know that you are my disciples, if you love one to another."
Let's let him finish. Anything else you want to finish?
That concludes my remarks, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay. This is the most unorthodox, I think, we've had with public comments, but this is obviously a huge issue. I said that I was going to close public comment. I'm gonna turn to you. You had mentioned that you wanted, that people wanted to ask questions, they could at the end, you mean at the end of the meeting or right now, or at the end of your mark?
Anytime, anytime that you, Mr. Mayor, decide they should, or can.
Okay, let's let Councilmember Becker speak, and I think we did have one question wanting to come from the audience.
I want to speak.
And then one here, and then, well, look at our agenda.
I'm going to say, I am a peacemaker. I raised eight children. Six of those children were stepchildren who'd had a very traumatic past. And when you raise eight children, you learn to be a peacemaker. Otherwise, you don't have any peace in your home, and that's very important. I think it's very important that we have peace in our city. Now, there has been an issue raised that was brought to light by a very open, public, transparent statement made by the person who is now being ridiculed and asked to step down. I think we need to think about that. We would never know about this had not Betty Martine been honest and open about something that happened many years ago. As I said last time, and some people may want to criticize me for saying, "This is something that happened in the past," but it was in the past. We have a future to look to, and I think we need to be positive, we need to be peaceful, we need to be helpful, and I think it's really sad that people reacted the way they did when scripture was quoted. I really do, I think that's very sad. We need to be better than that as a community. And I think that since this issue was brought up, our city staff is working very hard to get all the information. We've had an audit, we've done everything we can to rectify this situation, and it will be rectified. And anybody that says it won't be rectified needs to come and talk to us personally because if you see something we're not doing correctly, we need to talk to our staff and find out how to do a better job. I have full confidence that everybody up here wants to do the right thing, and that's simply paying back whatever might have been overcharged and trying to be as accurate about that as possible. Now, there's been a lot of theatrics, and we all love theatrics. I love theatrics. I can be very theatrical. And if that's helpful for the city, I'm going to be willing to do that, but I think we need to all sit back and think before we rush to judgment about blaming this one or that one. The main thing we need to do is take care of the situation as best we can with the facts that we can ascertain. And so I'd just like to call upon everybody to be thoughtful, be kind, don't rush to judgment, have faith in our community, because we do have a wonderful community. I say this almost every week because I'm a great believer in our city. We have a lot to look forward to, and I think we need to work together, be friends, be neighbors, do what we can for the good of our city. I hope we aren't telling people not to come here now. And there's one other thing that we might think about. What has been the response of the nine accounts that were overcharged? What has been the response of each of those account holders? Let's think about that. Each of those account holders, and there was one account holder that probably is going to be, have to be, have more money rectified than anybody else possibly, depending on what the facts bear out. What has been the response of each of those account holders? Let us, let us think about, what is money? What is blame? What are the legalities? I mean, some people really enjoy being legalistic, and sometimes that's hard to do when you don't have facts from many years ago, you don't have records or whatever, and yet you want to assign blame. Let's be careful about that. I like to have the facts before I judge somebody or assign blame, and I think the council has really been pretty good about, let's step back and see what we can get in the way of facts about this, and then do the best we can to move forward. That's what we need to do as a city, as a community, as friends and neighbors here. We really do have a wonderful community, and I consider this an episode that will get beyond. There's no reason that somebody shouldn't want to move to Bel-Air because of this, and I think if you ask all of the account holders, all nine of the account holders, you'll find that most of those account holders are going to tell you they have no problem with being in Bel-Air and working with the city to make this all right. So, as a peacemaker, as a council member that cares about all the city and every single citizen and every single business in this city, which I have full confidence our mayor and all the other council members share with me that desire, I just ask for, let's calm down the rhetoric a little bit, and let's be peacemakers, let's be friends, let's be neighbors, let's work together to move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
So, okay, with that, again, if you're still willing, we will go ahead and reopen. I guess conversation will start, actually, I'm gonna start, I think it's Mrs. Jones who'd asked-
I'm sorry, I just wanted to apologize if I made a procedural error with that.
You're fine.
Come on up.
I just wanted to clarify, it's possible the administration from Sunrise contacted the media, but you need to-
Okay, so, I guess let's go ahead and do this. If you want to ask a question, why don't we line up against this wall, and we'll come to the podium one at a time.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification. I have no idea if the Sunrise administration or anybody from their institution contacted the media. I contacted the media. Mike Schwenke's a neighbor of mine, so I contacted Channel 12, 10, 3, the Beacon, the Bel-Air, it's not the Bel-Air-
Breeze.
Breeze, well, it's the Bel-Air Breeze, but it's the-
Our Valley.
Thank you. I did that. So, I just wanted to own that piece. Again, other people may have done the same, but I've been in contact with Pilar, I can't pronounce her last name, with Channel 12 through the entire process, so I just wanted to own that as clarification.
May I respond to that?
Absolutely.
My point was that instead of coming to the city of Bel-Air and speaking with the administration, showing them the bills and say, "Listen, we calculate that we have been overcharged this amount of money, what are you going to do about it? Can you investigate and see that these figures are correct?" That is the proper way, in my opinion. When I said, "They chose some other means," they go to the audio, the visual, and the print, then I didn't- print, then I didn't mean that, you know, the head of Sunrise or whatever. It just meant that group of people who are here present, many of whom are here present, wanted to, my point was, I think, sensationalize this thing, to bring it out into a public area and to not just try to seek a peaceful resolution, but to harangue and ask for the resignation of a council member who was the agent responsible for this, I'll say, 20 years ago.
I appreciate, thank you. And I appreciate the clarification on, again, the procedural things. I guess I've assumed that coming to the council as a whole would be the appropriate venue and having to take the time out of individual schedules because I think you all work in addition to holding office. So if this was the improper venue, then I hear that loud and clear, that perhaps this is not the venue to bring concerns. So I'm trying to get that.
It was the media.
So, oh, it's the media?
Yes. Bringing the media, my point was, I've been in business for a long time, have been, and I've been overcharged, and I simply went to the people that overcharged me and said, appears to be an overcharge. Investigate and tell me. Am I correct or incorrect? Usually, they say, you're correct, and usually they'll give me a refund. That's the usual procedure. You can have people who are obstinate and who don't want to do that, then you just go upscale until you might end up seeking the advice of an attorney.
So, okay. So regardless, we're here, and they're here, so I don't know that we can sensationalize, sensationalize anything. I agree with Councilwoman Becker that we all just need to get along, we want to resolve the issue. I stand by my comments that with Ms. Martin being told in 2000, whatever it was, that to cease that activity, that it was illegal, that nothing occurred at that point. I think we're talking about lots of historical data that perhaps is important and relevant, but we have this other sole issue. And so, and again, I don't, I don't know you. I don't want to make this a personal thing. I'm trying to look at this as a perception of a citizen as well as somebody who hopes that businesses come. And so by bringing the media into this, I would think this is a fantastic opportunity to demonstrate for the community and demonstrate for the public at large, and to demonstrate even bigger than that for businesses that might want to come to this community, that the right thing is going to happen and resolution is going to be, and I have faith that resolution will occur the way it's supposed to. And so, again, I'll apologize for my procedural errors, and we'll, I don't think I'm going to think twice about bringing my concerns to the council first, and I don't know that I'd think twice about the media. But I just, I did want to own that, folks, and didn't want that to go somewhere else. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Why not?
So am I to understand that your motivation for going directly to the media, all of the media that you listed off, before you came to our city staff about this issue, or any of the council members or the mayor, your motivation was to try and get more business to come to Bel Air?
No.
Was, was that, that's what I just heard you say, so I wonder, what was your motivation, then?
So, first of all, the media wasn't contacted right out of the chute. And so the motivation is to make sure that this, this issue is taken seriously, and there were discussions that happened, again, so...
Could you, could you elaborate on those discussions that were had?
So I don't want to, I don't think it's appropriate to ask me to divulge conversations that had occurred with individual administrators, individual council members. I don't think that that's appropriate for me to do. I don't think that's appropriate. And I'm not saying that it's wrong, I'm just saying that I don't think it's appropriate. I don't want to violate anybody's confidentiality.
Yeah, let's move on to the next person who wanted a question. Again, we're just, someone wanted to ask a question specifically.
Mr. McDonald, I thought I, I heard in your remarks, there was a point in there where you said, where you, I think you asked the question, why did the accountants at Sunrise Academy, as skilled as they are, not present the issue previously? Something to that effect, maybe you could clarify for us?
Yes, what I said was that the accountants at Sunrise Christian Academy and Catholic Care, yeah, let me just quote from my remark because I've got it here. It was an aside. The accountants at Catholic Care and Sunrise Christian Academy should also answer why they did not notice a sudden and significant increase in their sewer rate or overall water bill. A substantial jump in the cost of water and sewer is not hidden. It is obvious.
So what, what I heard out of that remark was, is that we've, we've previously identified that there was an overcharge, and we've identified that this business was overcharged, and what it sounded to me like we were blaming the victim of the overcharge. To me, to me, to me, it sounded very similar, not to, not to sensationalize, Ms. Becker, but to me, it sounded very similar to, well, she would not have been assaulted if her skirt wasn't so short.
I don't understand what you're saying.
That's, you're blaming the victim. You're blaming the victim.
Who's the victim?
Sunrise Academy, who was overcharged, and the other eight businesses are the victim in this case of being overcharged. And it sounds to me like you're saying that because they didn't catch it, somehow it's their problem.
No, I said, it's their acts. It's their acts that I have difficulty with.
Their, their lack of bringing it to your attention that the city overcharged them.
Not bringing it to my attention. The, the accountants, when they receive a bill, they either, if, if you get a $10 bill per month and it goes to $25 per month, I think the accountants at each of these businesses should be responsible enough to notice that and then question why we were overcharged. Then you take that to the city and say, it looks like an overcharge. And my answer to that was, it's usually resolved, in my experience.
My answer to that would be that the business that sends the bill should probably send the right bill.
Okay, I think I have the answer to the question that was just being discussed. If I'm not mistaken, each one of these businesses was doing an expansion at that timeframe that we mentioned. They, they, they were either in process or they had got it done, and when they flipped the switch, they would have already been expecting larger water bills from the new building that they were constructing. So you're going to expect already a, a big increase in your water bill when you're doing a construction. And we can research that because I know all the ones that are on the list, they all have big expansions, and I think that explains it right there.
You have to demonstrate that, not just say it.
No, I will demonstrate.
Councilman, my name's Abercloyde. I live at 4922 North Hedgerel Court. I've been a long resident of Wichita, moved to Topeka for nine years, moved back and decided to reside in Bel Air, which, growing up, was a prestigious community. So I hold this area very highly in my heart, and I've loved the time that I've lived here. But my question to you is, in your remarks, how can we blame an accountant for a business for not seeing an overcharge? When Councilman Martinez admitted that she overcharged, to me, this is an ethical issue. It's not a character issue, it's an ethical issue. So at the end of the day, we're going to blame a victim for a missed cost, for an overcharge, when the city itself is the one that overcharged them? How do you justify that comment?
Because an accountant has a job to do, and that is their job.
Their job is to overcharge?
I did not say, I did not say, they also did not notice when the bill went down. And we'll say, I'll just make up a number, 10 years later, the bill went down because Ms. Martin was told not to do this anymore. She was told it was illegal, she couldn't do it, so she ceased. She stopped.
When the audit was conducted, was it not stated that these charges were hidden so well, nobody could see them?
And do you think Ms. Martin has the skill to do that, to deceive a CPA?
Ms. Martin is the one who did it. She admitted it on video.
I stated that it appears to me that she is the agent, not the final cause of the overcharge.
I know in my job, if I commit an unethical act, I'm the one being held responsible, whether my supervisor told me or not, it is my responsibility to take it to their supervisors that an unethical act is being committed.
I would say that this is not a matter of ethics, this is a matter of simple business.
Really? I'm sorry, I thought ethics and business went together because there is such a thing as an ethical business class.
Two distinct things that work together, but they are two distinct...
Without ethics, we can lose faith in our city council, and at this moment, I am highly losing faith in this city council.
That's your choice.
Hi, my name is Mark Hall. I live at 4849 North Glendale. I just want to say a couple of things. One, I appreciate the position you folks are in, it's a very difficult position. You're dealing with stuff that is from long past, so we appreciate the work that you're going into this. We know this is a lot to ask for people that are, that are doing this on a part-time basis. I, I would say that, that I do think that the outcome of this for the council should be to come out of this with a position of integrity. And I do think you've got some issues with integrity. I, I think we have issues with the past that we would have an employee who would be told to do something that they know to be wrong, and they would do it anyway. That is an unethical thing. That's not the kind of person that I think we want to have employed. But beyond that, we have an issue where it looks like in, in later years, we found out about this, and yet as a council, however this history happened, we didn't refund it back when we knew that it was going on. We didn't stop it, we didn't bring it to the attention decade ago. And now we have issues where gentlemen are bringing up current water bills, and it sounds like we may have issues there. This is the time to deal with all of this, to get this mess done, show integrity, get past it, show mercy, show forgiveness, be peacemakers. But you've got to deal with this issue of integrity because there's no issue, there's no reason that we should be making the news like this. So I would, I would just encourage you guys to really move that direction. Thank you.
I thought there was a question. All right.
Yes, I do, too.
Okay, then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to address one thing, since Councilmember McDonald decided to, to include me in his speech, which is fine. I have watched the April 12th workshop numerous times. All my family has actually watched it with me. And as we're sitting there, and Betty says they should have paid more, and I said, yes, they should be paying more, and I said it twice. I was getting ready to follow up with reminding her how we, as a council, because I was on in 2005, and, and how we changed the sewer rates. If you guys will get your bills, we have large sewer rates. And I was getting ready to explain to her that we do charge them more, when she said to me, and you, and you, and you, this is what I did. And then she went on to say, this is what she did, that all happened April 12th of this year. From then on, I just sat, and I, I couldn't believe what she was saying. I went home that night, my husband is here, he can tell you. I said, I honestly had no words. I just sat there, I did not even know what to say. I didn't ever even get to finish my statement. So I'm going to go on the record, I'm going to leave it at that, but that was what my follow-up was going to be before she said that. The other thing I want to say to the citizens, I'm going to do everything I can to, to make Bel Air a place that people want to come. I was at a two-day conference in Topeka the last two days, and the first thing, a friend from mine, from Hays, came up, and she said, what is going on in Bel Air? That was her first thing to me as she hugged me. We make the news, unfortunately, it's not the good thing right now. Another lady from Emporia, we're in line getting our lunch, and she said, my daughter's moving there, she wanted to move to Bel Air, but now she doesn't want to. I'm telling you guys, we, as a council, we've got to do this, we've got to do what's right, and we, we are going to act on it. I appreciate everything that you guys have said. We, we want to make it right to the, those that we overcharged, but we do need to, to do the right thing. It is an ethical issue, and it is something that needs to be taken care of, Mayor. Somehow, we've got to find the money to do it because we need to, to continue to bring businesses and people to Bel Air. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I look at the clock, it's 8:45. I look at Mr. Tim Austin, no relation, standing back there, he's supposed to speak on our first agenda item. I just want to make a couple of, just quick comments, then we are going to move on to our agenda. I just want to reemphasize, this audit was from 2003. Why does it go back to 2003? Because that's as far back as our records go. That surpasses the state statute of how long we must keep records. One of the comments tonight was, this has gone on way too long. And damn it, it has. It really has. I see a full room here, people taking notes all night. I'm the one who ordered the audit. I did that just in case the media called or someone called, and just in case that statement was correct, so that we could be and would be accountable and transparent and honest. And boy, am I glad that we did that, so that when the media called me and said, what are you doing about it? I didn't go, uh, 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 hoping you didn't find out about it. We were proactive. Do you have anybody up here, like I said at the beginning, I had hoped we'd had, we would have something to vote on tonight. We don't, we're still waiting on a couple of documents. We'll be open with all of that, discuss and vote hopefully very soon at a meeting. You know, yes, I'm the one who apologized. I think one of the comments was that I'm the only one who did that. I did, and I do apologize because it is, this is embarrassing. Many people talked about that we shouldn't be in the news for this. We were wrapped up between 2003 and 2007. And tonight, I've heard we're going to blame victims. I've heard we're going to blame someone else from the 1990s, 2003 to 2007. And this thing's blown way up. Now, I'm growing tired. I thought this city had moved past that blame game and all the baggage from the 90s. You only wanted to point out that I wasn't here. You're right, I wasn't here. How many times did we hear this seal read tonight? How many times tonight did we hear that we were a growing city and we want to be a growing It's time to move on. Moving on means taking ownership. Moving on means being honest and transparent, and we have been and we will be, and we will make this right with every single one of you, I promise you that. The Braves article, everybody wanted to bring that up. It talks about I went to a Wichita Wingnuts game on the 21st, a lady I had never met before recognized me and pulled me aside. Said, did it really go back that far? It happened yesterday when I was at the grocery store. People are asking these things. These are what we're being asked about and what's being done. All I can say, I cannot speak for any council member up here, and their decisions or their actions, and I will not. actions, and I will not. But what I can say is that I hope we can come together for a stronger future and continue to grow this great city. Before all of this, we were in the news for setting new house starts. We set records. We hadn't raised the mill levy in four years, at least. Positive, positive, positive. Statement was made, and blame is being thrown everywhere. So again, I apologize. I look forward, hopefully, I'm not quoting because obviously it didn't happen, but hopefully by the next meeting, we're going to have some more answers. And we're going to have a resolution plan that we can talk about. And we'll know the results of some of these other documents. I've said it before, the governing body, the staff, we all need to be accountable to all the citizens. So again, when we receive these final documents, we'll have a resolution plan. I will tell you, it will be in the next 30 to 60 days. You know? We have relatively short agenda tonight. I'm going to be selfish. I lost out on a bonus granddaughter night tonight. She's in bed. At least she better be. Thank you, everybody, for coming. But with that, I'm going to turn the page, and we're going to get on with our agenda. Thank you again, everybody, for coming. Find my notes. Let's move on to reports.
Now, funny, is everybody leaving? You know, I'd like to see a crowd like this at every single one of our meetings, to see all the wonderful things we're doing, all the good things we're doing for this community every single time we meet. We'd love to have this kind of a crowd. So everybody come back, and thank you for those that stayed. I really do appreciate that.
Let's start with you. It's your report. Let's do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, no, let's do it. Go for it. That was great.
I, first of all, want to thank the Lions Club, because I understand that they are going to be donating all the money you make on the fireworks stand this year to the city of Bel Air. Is that correct?
Not quite.
Okay.
All the money, all the money that we generate goes back into the community. It's not going directly to the city of Bel-- yes, and we intend to use a large portion, probably the, we'll say, I'll just give a number, 90% will go toward the creation of a park north and east of here, but that will have to be settled by the council.
Well, that is a wonderful thing. And you know, that's not an easy thing to do a fireworks stand. And I personally am not a fireworks person, but I know a lot of people enjoy that, and they do make money at it. And so that's a wonderful thing that the Lions Club is doing for our community. So I appreciate that, and all the hard-working Lions members here in town. I also just wanted to mention, the city manager sent us some photos of the high water this last couple of weeks. Is that the highest water we've ever had here? I don't remember ever seeing anything like that before.
Yeah, that, it's, you know, a lot of times when you plan for flooding, you have like a 50-year flood, 100-year flood, and I was talking with the city engineer, and that's more of a 100-year type flood. And so, yeah, it was very bad. And we had a lot of concerns about that. But you typically don't have those that bad of flooding. So, but everything receded, so that was nice.
Well, I think we can all be thankful that we didn't have any bad outcomes from that other than some scary-looking high water for a while and some inconveniences. But I think the city, probably the police department, did a lot to help direct traffic and everything during that. And I know our city engineer was right on top of that. And so I think the city did a great job of managing all that water. So we can be really thankful for that. And that's another good thing about living in Bel Air, because we are the highest point in Sedgwick County. So when we do have floods, it doesn't last very long, and it goes away rather quickly. We don't get very many of them. That was really, like you say, a once, a 100-year flood or something of that nature. And then I was just going to report that I plan to go to the REAP meeting on Thursday, and I was so glad they came tonight because they're doing wonderful things in our region. And it's really good when communities work together for the greater good for everybody in our whole area. So I think that's a very wonderful organization, and I'm so pleased to be a part of that, and that Bel Air is a part of that. I also plan to go to the Chamber Mixer on June 16th. I'm really looking forward to that because I haven't seen that new community building and one of our beautiful neighborhoods. And so I'm looking forward to that. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Mr. McDonald?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes, I want to, I also am thankful you sent me those pictures. I was in Sacramento with my debate and forensics team and was hearing about that rain. So I appreciate the update, and wanted to give my sympathy to Mayor Austin. He was actually out, we never saw each other. We crossed the same day in Sacramento for his grandma's, was it your grandma's funeral?
Yes.
He had contacted us to see if we were still there. He could come watch us, but unfortunately, we didn't make it to the final finals. So, but I appreciate the thought. And I appreciate Ellie and Betty sitting in while we were gone. The mayor and I couldn't attend the CCUA. And it's a little bit off, but if you guys would look at your calendars, I am going to be having surgery on July 12th. So I wondered if it was possible to do July 11th, because it's going to be kind of a big workshop on the budget. If it doesn't work for everybody, that's fine, but I kind of wanted to ask in advance and give everybody time to look at your calendars if it's possible that Monday, because I think that's our last big meeting before the August, when we have to have it done. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And if we can't, that's fine. But I did want to kind of ask you guys if that was a possibility. And that's all my report. Thank you, Mayor.
I can do it. I can do it.
Thank you.
Have to look at my--
Okay. Well, we can talk about it at the next meeting. I just wanted to ask--
And we do have a workshop between now and then.
Right. Next Tuesday, right?
Mrs. Winn?
Well, first, I thought I was going to have no report, but then I got to thinking about all the things that are coming up. So I think I'm going to remind people of things that are coming up. Dr. Becker reminded me, I have it on one of my calendars, of the Chamber Mixer coming up. But the Chamber is also doing a wonderful, new kind of thing. That is a very fun thing for the city, and it's called the Bell of the Ball. And it's a father-daughter evening. And so look for information about that on the website. I'm sure Tristan's got it, or she's probably tweeting about it, or those kinds of things. But I think it's like $20, and it includes food and what have you, and lots of fun for dads to go out with their young daughters, or there's no age limit. So, anyway. And also want to remind people that the Catholic Care Center is sponsoring a Parkinson's Run this Saturday, June 11th. And I'm not going to run, but I'm going to be there bright and early to help with the table and spread the word about the city of Bel Air. That concludes my report.
Thank you for being there. Ms. Martine?
Yes, I filled in for Mayor Austin at the CCUA meeting last time. Sorry about your grandmother. The discussion was quite long on their budget. No decisions were made. They will vote on that at their next meeting. They also discussed that whether to lease or buy the equipment for CCUA. Randall preferred leasing. No decisions were made on that, and the meeting went very well. Ellie, they did send out, I believe, to Peggy and the mayor. I sent mine to the mayor. Didn't even open it up. There were some corrections in the budget that Ellie caught, and so Randall sent out new budget line items. And that was, that was all.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Brush site is open this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. So we did have some rain here a couple of weeks ago, some rain and storms and stuff. So we may have got leaves down, or limbs down. Feel free to take them out to the brush site this Saturday. As Councilmember Winn stated, the Parkinson's Run is this Saturday. In the past, we've had it actually go through Central Park, and this year it's not. So it's all going to be on the campus, their walk and their run. So we've had police out, kind of doing escorts and closing roads and stuff during that time, but it's all on their campus. So people won't be inconvenienced by the run and stuff like that. And it will be, I think it's like from 5:00 to 7:00. It's an evening. In the past, it's always been during the morning. So this year, it's an evening event. And then the citywide garage sales are coming up June 23rd through 25th. And council waived the permit fees for that. So, and we've already been tweeting and Facebooking, and I've seen that people are retweeting and sharing on their Facebook. So it's given out that Bel Air garage sales are coming up in a couple of weeks. So that's all I had, Mayor.
May I ask, do you need any more help for the run?
The city's got a booth in connection with the Chamber. So if anybody would like to work at the booth, get ahold of Tristan. Anybody at home would like to come in and donate some time, you know, just take it in shifts, kind of like we do at the home show. So if anybody would, I know Ms. Winn's working, if anybody else would, get ahold of Tristan, and she's, she's kind of in charge of setting up volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
How about we move into our ordinances, resolutions, and final actions? First thing before council is a ordinance change. This is the northwest corner of 45th and Woodlawn, where there are four lots that are marketed to be sold. Three of those lots are currently zoned commercial, C1. The owner wants the fourth lot rezoned from residential, R1, back to commercial to C1. A developer is interested in buying those four lots for a storage unit-type thing and/or strip mall, some type of retail. I'm not sure. Only that will come at a future meeting. We're looking at the zoning right now, where our code requires storage units to be in a PUD or zoning overlayment, which takes additional steps. So again, at this meeting, we're only considering the zone change from residential to commercial for one of those lots to match the others. Again, then the developer will then need to go back through the same process for the PUD or overlayment for the development. Do want to point out, the planning commission approved the zone change at their meeting on May 12th. So just want to see if council is comfortable moving forward with that zone change. Again, only on Lot 4. This is of the Arthur Heights Edition. And I'm going to put people on the spot. Actually, Tim Austin and Ann are both here. I don't know if either one of you would like to speak to this, if there's any questions.
I'll be real brief. Just note, as you articulated, Mayor, there are four lots. Three of them are zoned C1. Three of the four lots are under one ownership. So two of the lots that are already C1 are owned by the individual bookhauser that was the green lot up on the graphic. And so it would be consistent with his other two parcels to zone that C1. Be happy to answer any questions. I think it's pretty simple and straightforward as a zone change at this step.
So it's just the area that was marked in green up there?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's back up there on the screen for those at home. And I know it's also on our packet, but if you're like me, my tablet's going to sleep.
I noticed, I went to, I think there was a big sale there this week. There were cars all over for miles. And I noticed the bricks on the front of that house were falling down. Somebody told me it was earthquake damage or something like that.
I don't know.
But that, will that house be torn down, or?
Under the current, obviously for tonight, it's for the seller of the property, the zoning. Also working with the buyer, prospective buyers looking at it, it would probably tear the house down under their current development plan.
And do you think that's pretty important, to utilize this for business or retail space in our city? I mean, to me, it's a prime property for development.
Yeah, traditional zoning around communities, not only in Kansas, but everywhere, is when you're on arterial corners like this property is, the collective properties, it makes it attractive for commercial uses, and it's not generally perceived as a good attraction for residential use.
Yeah. Well, I know the house is really not in shape for resale for a resident. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments about that. In general, I would be in favor of granting the change in zoning from R4 to C1. But this is a, as was said, a prime commercial property. In my opinion, it's the prime commercial property in Bel Air at this time. And that will change in the future as the city expands. But right now, the owners of that land are intending to put in storage units. And I do not, and they have to go through zoning changes to achieve that. I don't think that's a proper place in our city for storage units. There are many other places that it could be placed where it was not seen by people on 45th and Woodlawn Avenue. So for that reason, because they want to put in storage units, I view this as the first step to achieve that. If the plan was to put in doctor's offices, or maybe a restaurant, or whatever commercial buildings that would go there, that would be, you know, right across from Catholic Care. Catholic Care is a manicured, good-looking area. They could make that a good-looking commercial area with buildings on it. But storage units, I'm not in favor of. And I should say this. A close friend owns property that abuts that land, and he is in favor of the storage units. But that's the way it is. I have, I've met, I've talked to several other people who are not in favor of it, and I have to represent the majority of the people that I speak with, and that's why I will not vote for it.
Mr. Mayor? I think, though, at this point, we are just going to vote on changing it to--
From R1 to C1, yeah.
Yeah, because I think we have to be very careful that we don't get ourselves into trouble and get ahead of ourselves. So I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from R1 to C1 on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Mr. Mayor, I need to ask the attorney a question before there's a second on that. I live next door to this property, and so should I excuse myself from this?
Absolutely not. The only reason under state law anyone is required to recuse themselves is if it's a contract that you're voting upon. is if it's a contract that you're voting upon and if you have a financial, basically a financial gain associated with that contract. So outside of contract issues, none of you are required to recuse yourself. You will all have some kind of connection to everything in this community.
Thank you.
Second?
First and second?
Mayor, I want to clarify, because on zoning issues, I want to make sure everybody understands the steps. This, the planning commission got a little ahead of themselves in their public hearing. And I think that's confusing the issue before you tonight. Mr. McDonald, Councilmember McDonald stated that what he's interested in seeing there on this property would be offices and several things that you stated. In order for those things to be there, we need C1 on this corner. So in order to make that goal, the goal that you've discussed, that's the step we're looking at tonight is making the whole thing C1. Without this zoning change, it remains residential. And it's kind of a quirky little zoning that's going on there because there's also a non-conforming use thing happening. So basically, what we're doing is trying to give ourselves a clean playing field, creating the whole thing as a C1. And then the second step will be going back to planning commission and discussing proposed uses, which may be a storage unit. It may be some other types of things, but that's a separate issue.
May I respond to that? I was concerned because, as I said, I would normally vote for the C1. But the people that own the property are intent on putting in storage units. And so I thought that if I voted against and other council members thought the same, that we would prevent that from occurring. And that would encourage the current owners of the property to either seek other types of business people coming in to use the property or simply sell it to someone else who would be interested in putting in commercial buildings of some sort. But if you're saying that we have, what, one or two more steps to go through?
You will have at least one more step. The planning commission has to go back and review the proposed use. And if they approve the proposed use, then that recommendation would come back to you. And if the proposed use that they would recommend would be storage units, that would come back to you and you would get to decide on that issue specifically. The only thing before you tonight is should that corner be used for commercial instead of residential? That's the only issue tonight.
So your recommendation is to approve this. I know you can't recommend. It's your thought that we're not going to, if I vote against it and other council members vote against it and we defeat it, we're not going to be helping ourselves with, because in the future, it's going to be a commercial, has to be zoned commercial, C1 or more, depending upon what the type of commercial properties are scheduled to go in there.
Absolutely. The other thing is, regardless of how this vote goes tonight, the proposed purchasers who are interested, and we've all heard, they're interested in a storage unit. Those proposed purchasers will be going back to the planning commission with their request for a planned unit development, whether you approve this or not. And so when I tell you these are totally separate issues, they're totally separate issues. The only thing you're voting on tonight is should we clean up the zoning? As a member of staff, while I hate to recommend anything, it sure would make it easier to deal with a property that didn't have this old non-conforming use sitting on it.
Yes, Mayor, I will not oppose this.
May I say something further, Mayor?
Yeah.
I just feel like it's really important for us to move forward on this because this is, we want development in our city. And I think that corner, that particular piece of property in question is really an eyesore now. And I can't see anybody ever wanting to go back in there and live there as a residence. That would take so much work to make that, bring that up to standard. And so I think it'd be a good news for us to go ahead and approve this.
I'm excited. Someone's talking about putting something there that's going to be retail of some kind, yeah. First and second. Apologize, I just put a piece of cane in my mouth. That was bad.
I didn't talk as long as you thought I'd.
No. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will, since it is an ordinance change, I have to talk a lot. So, excuse me, that was rude. And we're going to start. Dr. Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And I vote as well in the affirmative. Next is consideration of a service agreement with Wichita State. Thanks for coming, Mr. Austin. At our March 13th meeting, so we're going back a couple of months, we accepted a proposal from Wichita State to complete these surveys. This is the service agreement. Our attorney has reviewed it and is comfortable with council approving it. So we entertain a motion on that. So moved.
Second? May I ask a question, City Manager? I was just wondering, or maybe our attorney, why did it take so long to get this back to us?
I don't know. It's...
I need to answer that because I didn't like the first one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, good.
So I rewrote it and sent it back to them. And then they, of course, because we're attorneys, they had to rewrite what I rewrote. So there was an attorney war behind the scenes.
Well, I wondered about it because I sure expected to get this back sooner, so, okay.
Well, thank you for all that work. First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next is a zone change ordinance for Deer Run. A developer has purchased 60 acres there on the east side of Rock Road at approximately 48th Street. See it up on the screen there. This is to install a new housing addition that will be called Deer Run. So again, this kind of goes back. We're bringing in more homes. We're bringing in more residents. And again, this is a current zone change because the current zone is agriculture. Because it wasn't that long ago, that was agriculture land out there. But the, now, you know, the ground was pasture and frontage there along Rock is zoned commercial. This developer wants the entire 60 acres to be zoned R4 for residential developments. So kind of the opposite of what we just did. Do want to point out, the planning commission unanimously did approve this ordinance change.
Mr. Mayor, were there any people there to speak against this? Do we know?
I don't believe so. No, because it's all, it's agriculture right now. And there's, on the south side, there's kind of that marshy area that's north of, what's the subdivision on the corner of 45th and?
Sawmill Creek?
Sawmill Creek, yeah. And then to the north of that.
It's just right north of that?
Well, this is about right up to Sawmill Creek.
Yes, but where the actual houses are in Sawmill Creek is south of a marshy floodplain area.
Yes, but that looks so pretty from there. Houses, it looks like a nice lake out there.
Yeah. But the developer, he would rather have lots out there to sell. So the homeowners is good for. But yeah, so it'll butt up against them. And then on the north side, it actually will butt up against Rock Spring. And you can see there's, well, it's kind of hard to see from here, but there's actually a couple of roads that will go from that, this subdivision, up into Rock Spring.
Great. Good.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I hope I'm on the right one.
We're on C.
On C.
C, okay. I'd like to move to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from AG and C1 to R4 on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any questions or comments? And it's an ordinance, so Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative. Okay, moving on to yet another zone change ordinance for Chapel Landing. The folks that developed Chapel Landing felt that patio-type homes at the entrance off of Woodlawn would be a good option for buyers, as well as kind of a buffer too for the larger homes. Again, we're going through a lot of changes here as housing is coming and we're growing. A zoned R4 there. The smaller lots and homes require a zone of R5. The planning commission did unanimously approve this zone change as well at their meeting on May 12. And you can see what we're talking about there on the screen in your packet. Developers engineer, well, he was here. I was going to answer any questions on that zone change and developers agreement or final plat. But again, I wanted to say our planning commission did unanimously approve this as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from R4 to R5 on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second? First and second, questions or comments? Dr. Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And I also vote the affirmative. The city requires developers' agreements when any new addition is plotted, which is why we have item E on our agenda. The developer agreement identifies the responsibilities of the developers as well as the city. Staff did create the agreement with input from the developer. It's now before council for final approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. I move to approve the developers' agreement for Chapel Landing second addition and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
All right, first and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and moving right along, again, connected here with item F. The developers worked with Bachman and Company to create the final plat. The city engineer, and Ann, again, thank you for staying around, reviewed this final plat and is comfortable with this design. Obviously, she's here if we have questions. Again, at the May 12th planning commission meeting, they approved this preliminary plat unanimously. And the final plat now comes before council for the approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat for the Chapel Landing second addition and authorize the appropriate signatures.
Second?
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is consideration, excuse me, of an ordinance changing the zoning classification. Here we go again, from AG to R5 on certain properties. This is the developer, the development over there at Rock Springs. They want to purchase an additional 20 acres directly to the east of the Rock Spring addition for multifamily homes. Current zoning there again is AG, agriculture. They want to move it to R5, which allows for the multifamily homes. And the zone change would allow this closing to move forward so we'd have another land sale. Again, at the May 12th planning commission meeting, they were busy that day, weren't they? Holy cow. They did unanimously approve this zone change.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is just to the west, are those are duplexes, right, that they would butt up against, right? That are...
No, those are single.
They're single.
Yeah, single family.
Trying to think of my...
And then there's the hedgerow there.
Right.
And then on the other side of the hedgerow is where they're looking at this 20 acres to put in the duplexes.
To the east, but it's on the south side of 53rd?
Yes.
But there are some duplexes that come back there next to, I know, Cheatham's land.
Right. Right, so you've got a group of probably about 60 acres in the center. That's single family. And then coming back towards Rock, you have multifamily.
So this would match that.
And then on the other side, you'll have multifamily.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, you're in the right location.
And is this still held in the PBC?
This is the land bank.
The land bank holds this, okay. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from AG to R5 on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second? First and second, are there any questions or comments? Go down, roll call for vote. Dr. Ramona Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martin?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Diane Nguyen?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. Next, we have item H, which is a resolution. This has to do with some recent staffing changes. We maintain several reserve accounts for projects and funds. And we do that so that we get the best interest rate. We utilize, the city utilizes various short-term investment opportunities allowed under state statutes. One of the firms is the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. Michelle and Chris were the two employees that were allowed to move funds within, to and from this account. As you guys know, Michelle's no longer with the city. So the resolution, what we're doing is adding the city manager and the new incoming Director of Administration and Finance to also be able to have access here in a way. So we have, you know, additional signatures and more people that, you know, because it would still take the two signatures for movement, right? Yeah, so that's what we're doing here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager and the Director of Finance and Administration to transfer funds, withdraw funds, issue letters of instructions, and all other actions deemed necessary or appropriate for the investment of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, final action here is for accepting bids for asphalt curb, wheelchair ramps, thermal crack here at our parking lot. We received two bids, very close to each other. Both are very good companies. But the 2016, for those at home, 2016 street fund budget does contain $100,000 for street repairs. Our city engineer has prioritized several projects that needs to be completed. And we've taken bids for that. And again, Ann is here to discuss these projects if you'd like and answer any questions. Okay, Ann, yeah, why don't you come up? You've waited this long?
Well, just tell us which one, the citizens too, which ones?
Yeah.
So I went through and did an accounting of all the streets. I took an assessment of their conditions. As I was going out and assessing the street conditions, I identified numerous areas throughout town that are small repairs that need work. There are some that we can do ourselves with our staff. And there's others that are just a little too large to be able to do ourselves, but not large enough to receive individual contracts. So this is what those are. There's asphalt patches that are larger than what our staff feels comfortable doing. Curb repair, wheelchair ramps, they're more comfortable working in asphalt than in concrete. So that's why those are involved in there. Then the thermal crack repair in the city parking lot. Those are just items that are a little too large for us. They're in various areas throughout the city, so it's not just one location. So I can't really specifically say which location, but I can definitely provide you with an accounting. And some of those locations were also provided in the bids for a little bit more specific that you have in your packets.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Now, when I was reading this, if I could ask, is this, when you said city parking lot, I actually thought this city parking lot here at City Hall?
Yes.
Or is it a different?
Yes, it's the north parking lot.
Okay.
As you may have noticed, there's orange lines painted in various areas on the parking lot. It's just the asphalt's deteriorated and needs to be repaired. It's just the asphalt's deteriorated and needs to be repaired.
Just normal wear and tear from time.
Correct.
I keep thinking of this as a new building all the time, and I know it's not, it's getting old now, but it still seems like a new building to me.
Correct.
But I understand these things wear out and we have to repair them.
Yes, and then probably next year, we'll tackle the south side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ann, I have a question.
Sure.
About the north parking lot, as you, and you park in the handicap spot just to the south of the senior center, there's a space where someone got out of their car, and the curbing there is unusual, and so they stepped off and they fell. So if you, I don't know if that's part of your repair work or not, but if not, if you might have somebody take a look at it to see if it is something that can be corrected?
Sure. There's no specific curb repairs, but there are repairs to the asphalt in that area, and I believe once the asphalt is repaired, then it will alleviate that tripping hazard, but I will take a look at it tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
I would like to echo that because I have actually tripped going out that door, you know, and I'm not usually too clumsy. So I think there may be a problem there that maybe you should look at, for sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
So again, we have the two bids, they're in your packet. Both are very good companies. One is $1,200 less than the others.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from PP&amp;J Construction for the lesser amount of $40,312, and authorize the manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Discussion of future issues. The only thing, just, we do have a workshop next, this coming up Tuesday at 6:30. Kind of get a little bit, started to scratch the surface on our budget, the last one, so we'll have that. We'll look at the proposals for master planning and need to tackle the issue that we've talked about a couple times, Eagle Lake and the drainage with all the stuff, so.
That was Tuesday at the 14th?
Correct.
I will be out of town.
Okay. Is everybody else able to make it, or?
Should we look at another day if Mr. McDonald's going to be out of town?
The 13th? Are you here, the 13th?
No, I won't be back probably till, probably late the 15th, the 16th or 17th, or whatever. I'll just be out, so.
So you'll be out all that week?
I'll be, yes, as a matter of fact, I'm leaving tomorrow.
I see.
Well, safe travels wherever you're going.
Have a good night, nurse.
All right. Enjoy some time away. All right, and again, this is a workshop, so we'll certainly have a conversation, and then all of this stuff, we'll have a chance to talk to you again, so. But I do appreciate you letting us know, Mr. McDonald, about that. So we're going to plan on keeping it Tuesday at 6:30. So with that, any other issues that we need to discuss tonight?
Do we need an executive?
I have no need for one. I don't believe so, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned. One area, there's a number of other places in the county where people opt in.